Ten thousand dollars every time he's up.
Are we on Facebook live?
We are recording.
Thank you. We are not live on?
Recording, but you're not live.
Thank you.
We should probably practice that then.
All right, I have 5:59 yet, I'm sorry.
Your administrator's the only one with skills to put us off.
And the equipment.
Or the one that trusts himself to not screw it up.
Well, we're gonna have to talk about succession planning then.
No, he's gonna be here for 20 years.
Thirty, no less. He's young.
Only hope, all right.
He is, very young.
All right, is everybody ready? Let's get started, I guess.
Be ready.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome this evening, Monday, January 17th, 2022. The time is 6:01 PM. This is a Swamaco Village Board meeting. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. I would also remind anyone speaking that they please speak into the microphone, provide your name and address. At this time, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Ward to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Schneider. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. All right. Item number five, presentations. We have a new hire at Public Works, Street Crew One, Andy Schoenwalder, and that goes to the talented Director Smiths.
Thank you. Andy could not make it tonight. He did have prior commitments prior to us getting him on the agenda, but I promised him he will show up for a board meeting here at some point. So we'll get him to introduce himself when he can make it. But Andy comes from about eight years of public works experience from the city of Green Bay. This was a position that we created this year as an addition to the Public Works Department. So we have now six full-time employees in the Public Works Department, which is a great addition going into this year. So we welcome Andy here. He brings a lot of skills. He was in the concrete business prior to working for the city of Green Bay. We'll use his skills to the best of our abilities and hopefully he shows how talented he is, you know, we've seen so far and continues to grow.
How long is?
Do you only hire Andys?
I'm definitely partial to the names. No, we actually had a lot of applicants. We had over 30 applicants for the position. We interviewed five and it was a tough call. There was three of them that were very qualified, very kind of equal on their experience and abilities. So we picked Andy and hopefully it works out.
Wonderful, very good. All right, moving on. Item number six, public appearances. At this time, the public may address the village board on items that are not on the scheduled agenda. No action will be taken on that by the village board at this time. However, the item may be referred back to another committee or staff for follow-up. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward, provide your name and address. All right, seeing no one, we will move on. Item number seven, consent agenda. A, previous minutes of the village board meeting dated 1/3/2022, treasurer's December 2021 check registry, and item C, municipal court December 2021 report. Is there any discussion from the board on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have no discussion. I have a motion to approve by trustee Eckert. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. It's by trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Compliments to the staff on the consent agenda. The last couple of times, it's gone through pretty smoothly. All right, item number eight, administrative items. Wetland mitigation bank update, Mr. Chad Fredette. And it looks like we have two items under that, the financial assurances with Fortified Bank, and also we're going to be talking about Resolution 2201, a resolution to approve conservation easements with the Department of Natural Resources for the Swamagon Wetland Mitigation Bank.
Finally, I have something for you to do. The DNR, the Core and Title Company, would like you to approve a resolution approving the conservation easement. The conservation easement was in your packet along with a summary from Minister Kaker, the resolution, the Fortify Bank letter of credit. I think that was all that was in there, yeah. Would you like me to give an update first, or you want to go through this first?
Let's go through the, why don't you give us an update, if that's okay with the rest of the board?
That's good.
So our getting close is getting closer each time? So there's been a lot of back and forth. It's been on, all the back and forth has been on little language changes? And it's kind of fun because most of the questions I get are, well, where did you get that language from? From the documents you gave me to use, or where you told me to get them? So it's been kind of fun and it is what it is. We're, we were down from about 25 comments down to, I think we were down to five as of last Friday. I worked on them over the weekend. Alex is satisfied with four of the five. We have, we don't have disagreement on one of the five. We're just not sure how to deal with it. And so I think that when I have a conversation with the Core on Friday, we'll be down to this one point. And that point's related to the long-term management funding. And that kicks in after construction, after the 10 years of monitoring and maintenance. This is the next chunk, which is technically supposed to be in perpetuity, but we said in the agreement, we will do it for 40 years. And we put together a budget for 40 years. That's roughly $120,000 for that 40 years of just the, well, you're gonna create a commission called the Swamagon Management Commission. That's gonna be a village commission that's going to be in charge of monitoring this for the 40-year time period. And by the end of the 40 years, it's just, you walk out and make an inspection, make sure it looks good. And if there's something wrong, you contact the Core and say, hey, we got this wrong, something wrong here, we gotta fix it. You know, within that 40 years, there's three tree thinning events. So it's really not much going on. And that's why it's really only 120 grand for that 40 years. And their concern has come about because most banks take the money that set aside to fund that long-term management, and they invest it in something like an S and P 500 index fund, which gains 7% to 10% average growth. And you're not allowed to do that as a village. You can only put it in the state's fund, which makes from .001 to 2.3%, which is its general range. Right now, it's basically nothing.
But it's much, it's much more secure. It's a much more secured investment.
It's secure. There will be no loss in, there'll be no loss in that, in that money. But you're not keeping up with inflation, so that's why we put in the inflation modifier on the credit price. So your credit, when you get a credit and you sell a credit, you put aside 1.6% of that. So as your credit price rises, you'll hopefully keep up with inflation because generally the credits are based on inflationary measures, land prices, labor costs, et cetera. And so you'll hopefully be able to keep up the inflation and be able to have those monies available. But the issue they're having is that we based our 40-year timeframe off another bank, a very recently approved mitigation bank. And now they're having problems with that. I don't, they didn't really get into what problems they're having, but they don't want to set a 40-year timeframe. They want to kind of leave it in perpetuity, but I think we've got them down to, well, hey, we'll do this until the money runs out and we projected it's going to last 40 years. We're not sure that DNR's gonna like that, so Alex Kaker and I came up with like giving them some extra dollars, maybe $20,000 will kick into the pot to cover that. So we may be looking at setting aside about 142,000. Under your current projections, you'll set aside 122,000. So a little bit over that budgeted amount. So I think if you offer them that will kick in an extra 20 grand, I think they'll go for it. To say, we'll do it until the money runs out. And that's what we'll actually say in the agreement is, we will do long-term management until the money's gone, exhausted, and then we're done. And I think they'll go for that. So that's, I just want you to think about that a little bit. One of the other options that we kicked around was using the measures that we have within the long-term management. You don't have invasive species, you don't have, the berm's in good shape, you don't have crazy things going on. And if those measures are being met for five consecutive years, starting at year 35, then you'd be done. That would be the same 40-year timeframe. But we think that that could maybe ensnare the village in some perpetual mess we don't want to deal with. So we don't think that's the best way to go. So we're just, we're probably gonna propose that dollar amount of.
So I've got a question for you.
Yes.
So if at some point this property, so this property is going to be restored to wetlands, we have the funds through the Swamagon Commission that'll be watched over to basically maintain that, that property. If this property is sold to a private, privately, what happens to that fund and that commission?
You still have, that all still exists. You can sell this property as soon as the mitigation bank, NBI, signed, you can sell it. And we have all the rights to do the bank. So you can sell it, but you still have that responsibility. That never leaves. You can transfer that to another organization, a conservation group, Ducks Unlimited, or a land trust, or the DNR. You can transfer that, and that's in the NBI that you retain the right to transfer it. At the time of transfer, you have to renegotiate a little bit with the Army Corps at that point, the IRT. They have to agree to the transfer. And at that point, whatever group you're transferring to will probably say, hey, we need some dollars to take it on. And you can negotiate that out and transfer it away. So if you don't transfer it, the village keeps that in perpetu, in perpetuity.
So at this point, we've got the one, five remaining questions. You feel like we have the one remaining question which you and Alex are working on, which is to address the 35, the 40 years versus in perpetu, in per-
Perpetuity.
Thank you.
And really, we want to just get it down to, hey, there's this much money and we're gonna maintain this as long as the money's there. Once the money's out with this extra kicker of $20,000, then that's it. That's it.
So this may not be forever, because that is one of the things that always kind of bothered me about this. You're shooting for 40 years.
We're shooting for 40 years, and the engineers believe that after 20 years, there won't be any issues with the subsurface barriers whatsoever. They actually predicted after a dozen years, that would be sufficient for that. But we put 20 years into the plan for that. And there really isn't much to do. You thin the trees out so that they're growing well, and then they're left to grow to a mature forest. And there shouldn't be anything going on at that point. Invasive species that we're concerned about, like the sun, so they should start shading them out at year 20. So we shouldn't have those issues to deal with. So we're confident in that.
Other questions? So in terms of what you're looking for this evening?
Mm-hmm.
Has everyone had a chance to look at this? Does anyone have any questions over what's being requested this evening? Chad, do you want to just summarize?
So the resolution that the Title Company, DNR, and Core would like you to approve just authorizes the conservation easement to be entered in. And there was one recent change to that easement that the DNR wanted, and it wasn't anything major. So we're, we're happy with that. There's a couple little things that have to be filled in, dates and such, on the title of the conservation site plan. Above other than that, it's pretty standard for every other bank. And then the, the title commit, or not the title commit, the letter of credit that you have from Fortify Bank just says that you have two different things going on here. You've got the 1.4 million for construction, and then you've got the letter of credit saying you have the money there for the management after construction. And that's, this 237,500 for management is going to be exhausted in the first 12 years post-construction. And that's not the same as the long-term management funding.
One question I asked Alex, and he replied, I just wanted to confirm that though. So the fees here, there's a $7,000 fee for the letter of credit, the 1.4 million dollar letter of credit. There's also an $1,187 fee on the second letter of credit for 237,500. Both of those fees are going to be fees that are wrapped into the total cost of this project, so they'll be paid for by this project?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and that's a half point, so yeah, that's half point of 1.4 million, half point of the 237,500. Seems like a lot to me, but, you know, that's what they do, I guess.
It's what the market will bear.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, that it seemed high, but obviously they looked into other financial companies and, you know, I'm sure they weighed everything out.
And this is an annual fee, so it'll change with the prime rate. You're tied to the prime rate, prime rate plus one. And the first one, we want to get rid of as fast as we can to get construction done. The other one will stay there during the timeframe of the long-term maintenance after construction. But that one, I think you'll be looking at a yearly basis, so those should go down. We won't need to have all these monies every single year, so that should reduce over time.
All right, so if we go through this and we can go through these motions this evening and resolve these two items, or at least get them moving forward, when, when do you, what does the timeframe look like? What's your, what's the latest update on credits? And I know that that's putting a finger in the wind and seeing which way the wind blows, but.
Well, credits are still, I haven't seen updated credit prices for this year yet. I haven't seen that come out. You're still at 58.35 credits right now. After NBI signed, then we're gonna get to work on reinserting the stream and the other wetland credits. So your credits will rise back up to over 60, as they were before. I don't recall the exact number, and I don't want to quote it until I go through the stream credits again.
Sure, of course.
Because they'll probably change something on me again in those calculations. Timeframe-wise, well, hopefully if we can get this resolved Friday, and then they'll send it to their corporate council next week. I would hope by the end of next week, we would have some idea if they're going to direct or tell the IRT that they're going to sign the NBI. And then they have 15 days after that notice.
Okay.
Cross your fingers.
I've had it crossed for so long, they're sore. At least they stay that way.
Right. I know. Almost.
Yep, but hopefully we're getting closer. Are there other questions for Mr. Fredette?
Well, as you know, I've been against this all along, but I'm for the easement and moving things forward.
So we're looking for two motions. The first motion we would need would be to authorize staff to execute the commitment letter from Fortify Bank dated January 6, 2022, for two letters of credit upon approval of the Swamagon Mitigation Bank instrument. That's the first motion we would be looking for. Is there anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved. You read it already.
Trustee Schneider has offered to make the motion as read. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Schneider.
Andrews.
I'm sorry, Andrews.
I can't offer a second my own.
I understand. I was reading and talking at the same time. Okay. Is, are there any further questions, discussion from the board? All right, if all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you. All right, moving on, the second motion, looking for a motion to approve Resolution 122001, a resolution approving a conservation easement with the Department of Natural Resources for the Swamagon Wetland Mitigation Bank. If I'm pronouncing that wrong, somebody please tell me.
Perfect.
No, that's right.
Thank you. Done. All right, so I would be looking for that second motion, if there's anyone willing to offer that.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Schneider, offering the motion as read to approve Resolution 22001. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews.
Ward, Ward first.
Ward first?
Ward, whichever way you want to.
Second from trustee Ward. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Is it a roll call if it's a resolution?
Uh, no, not unless there's, no.
Okay.
Money attached to it typically, or ordinance, right?
Okay.
Okay, motion carries five, two, zero. Thank you.
Trustee Eckert voted for that.
I said I would.
Thank you.
I don't lie.
That's your first yes. I love it. Thank you.
Keep it going, Chad.
You missed the consent agenda. That was a yes as well.
She even brought it up, too.
All right, thank you. All right, consent agenda. All right, moving along. Item B, 8B, authorization to advertise a request for proposals contracted engineering services. Director Smiths?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The village uses professional services in a variety of ways here, whether it's legal representation, the assessing, the engineering. And most recently, we went out for RFP a few years ago for our village attorney. And that kind of stemmed into all other business. So Alex has put together an RFP here for our engineering services. And we're just basically going out to make sure we're getting a fair price and rate for the services that the village is being offered. In the last, over the last, I'd say, five, six years, we've used Ayers and Associates, and it's been a really good relationship as far as how it was established and set up. And it's a kind of a back and forth, and we use them for, you know, a lot of different projects. And it seemed to work, so we're basically, Alex put together an RFP that will kind of mirror how we've had that relationship with Ayers, but we are gonna see, you know, who's all available or interested and get prices and hourly rates to see where everybody comes in and how it compares. And just make sure that, you know, everything is equal across the board and we're not just relying on one, one company. But again, nothing that Ayers hasn't done or hasn't proved that they're worthy to continue being the village's engineering services. So attached is the RFP. If there's any questions, let me know. I'll take them back to Alex. He put it together, and we all reviewed it here and it seemed, it seemed to make a lot of sense and has everything covered or that we'd be looking for through, through either continuation of the existing firm or, or somebody new. So we would likely include myself, Alex, and somebody from the Public Works Utility Commission on them interviews at the time that we conduct those, unless, you know, you guys wish to see somebody else from the board on that committee, or on that interview panel. Otherwise, we would be looking to solicit an RFP for contracted engineering services.
It's always good to be transparent when we're talking with our resources, so it's a good idea. And I'm sure Ayers does a great job. It's gotta be on, on the up and up.
It has been a good relationship with Ayers, and I mean, you've done, you've done wonderful work with the village. Ayers has done wonderful work with the village. But I, I agree, it's just, we just need to get that out there and make sure that we're, you know, being open and transparent about our relationships, so.
There's nothing else, I'll make a motion to direct staff to solicit an RFP for contracted engineering services.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to direct an RFP for contracted engineering services from trustee Andrews. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second from trustee Ward. Any other further discussion, questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, item number nine, Public Works Utilities Items. Item A, mailbox replacement program. Director Smiths?
All right, this is an item that we talked about a couple of meetings ago. So we brought it back and put together a very simple replacement permit for residents to come in and fill out if, in fact, their mailbox post is damaged by the, by the snow or the plowing operation. Again, the village does cover the repair if it's struck by the plow or the wing itself. So that is on us. If we physically strike the mailbox and damage it, we will fix it or replace, or reimburse the property owner up to $25 for the replacement of that mailbox. So this is kind of supplemental. It's, you know, it's for the individual or person who can't, you know, make it out to their mailbox to repair it if it does get knocked over by the snow. It is a phone call that I do receive periodically throughout the course of winter. And it can definitely be challenging to, you know, stand, fix that post or to get it to stand upright again or secure it so that it doesn't keep tipping over, you know, during every snowfall. So we believe $75 would be the fee that should cover our cost, other costs of the post, and our time to go out there and repair it. Pretty straightforward. It's not something we have to offer. And there's gonna be unique situations where, you know, it's not just a simple fix. They have something underground that you don't know about, or it's some, you know, some weird thing. But we think that this may be a beneficial service that some residents may utilize in the wintertime. So again, it's not something we have to offer. We've never done it. It's just, you know, based on experience, it is, it is a call that we get here and there. And unfortunately, up till now, we have to basically tell them they're on their own and need to seek help elsewhere. So might be something that'll work. We can try it out. We can see how many we fix over the rest of the winter and see where we stand, you know, financially at the end of how much time and material we have into it. And if $75 is too high, we can lessen it or increase it a little bit. But kind of laid out the permit. There's just a few items on there that, you know, identify it has to fit, but it's intended for. It can't be because you didn't like it, or you, you ran it over yourself, or your snowplower hit it. So if any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
It's a service that you don't intend to make money on.
Correct. Absolutely.
It's just a service to our residents and not necessarily something that, it's not your fault, it's just something that happens.
Yes. I think we'll just kind of use the rest of this winter as a trial period. I mean, if we get into it where, you know, residents are, for whatever reason, it's just not working because it's not up to their standard or whatever, you know, it's not something we have to continue. But I think some people will appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there is, there is a risk here, obviously, where there's gonna be some, some disagreement in terms of, you know, did my mailbox post, was it broken by the snow, or was it broken by your plow? Right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and we're gonna have to look at that as well. I personally, if my, my post is broken off from the, from the snow, which you see, I, I would, I'd be happy to have somebody who could, you know, if I could pay $75 through the frozen snow to throw a new post in, it would sure beat me having to fill up a garbage can with gravel.
Take the pickaxe and try and break through the frost.
And I guess, you know, the point is it's a pilot program, right? It's, it's something we're gonna try. If we don't, if, if it's not of use to the village or folks have issues with it, then it, we can just continue it.
Yep, looks like it'll be good. Okay.
Other comments from the board?
No, I, I think it's good.
So if there's no other comments or discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve the mailbox replacement service as noted here.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Schneider to approve the mailbox replacement service as described. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, item B, 2022 Department of Public Works truck purchases, and guess who? Director Smiths.
Thank you.
He seemed to be the star.
I know, Alex deferred it to me tonight, so my one time of year.
We're, we're glad to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm shining, all right. All right, so previously, back in July, you guys authorized me to order a pair of snow removal trucks here for this next year, being the 2022 fiscal year. And we had everything ordered and in place, and I thought life was gonna be good. We were gonna expect these vehicles here sometime in the middle part of the summer and be ready to get trained on those and have those ready for snow come next winter. But I got a letter in the mail the other day, actually, yeah, in the mail. And so Domler Truck is the parent company of the company that we ordered these two trucks from. And they had issued a notice to all their distributors that there's gonna be a surcharge and a delay on their vehicles to their dealers. So definitely not the dealer's fault or the person that we, you know, bought these and ordered these trucks through. I think this is kind of, I don't want to say common, but it's happening with a lot of things throughout the country recently. So what it boils down to is, we were told that there's gonna be a $2,900 surcharge per vehicle. Both fall in the 114 SD category under models. So if you move to the right, total M, or year 23 surcharge is $2,900 per vehicle and expect one-quarter delay on those deliveries. So talking with the dealer and Monroe Truck, who is doing the body builds, they said they still can have these trucks put together and deliver. still can have these trucks put together and delivered by around November of 2022. So it's not terrible as long as this doesn't get backed up any further. You know, they def, there's still no guarantee on it, on the delivery. You know, this is best case scenario, that they'll be over to Monroe sometime and hopefully July at the latest, they'll be able to get them in their shop and start building on them. So it's, it's unfortunate, but I guess there's, we need the vehicles, they're important for us to do what we do here and do our job. So the single axle truck, we had 215,000 budgeted for, we were a little bit under budget, so that one, we will be able to absorb the $2,900 and not have to go over. But I would be requesting a new budgeted amount of 198,000 over the 195 for the tandem haul truck, pre-treatment truck. That one, we were really close to 195 on the order, and this is going to put us over by about $2,700. So I would be looking for a motion to continue moving forward with the two vehicles. We can cancel them, but I just think we, they're important to what we are planning to do here and hopefully the ER can, can, can take it and absorb that cost.
Got to do it.
When did we place these on order?
When? I signed the contract, or it wasn't a contracts agreement, July 1st.
Of 2021.
So from July 1st until I got this letter, I thought life was good, and then it wasn't so good.
There certainly are a lot of new challenges, and this is, just seems to be one of them.
Yeah, it's difficult because you try to plan ahead, and I mean, how far in advance can you plan ahead? I mean, we, we only, our budgets are every fall, so it's hard to, to make decisions, you know, too far in advance, not knowing where we're going to be at the next fall. So, you know, we thought by a year, well over a year in advance of expecting delivery, we'd be okay, but it seems to be getting worse.
I just think it's crappy that you can throw on a, a surcharge a year and a half after an agreement, oh, now we can do it.
So the options are, we can cancel the order.
Oh, I mean, we need it. I mean, Chuck Eckert was right, we need them.
And I did contact a few other dealers in the area that we've purchased vehicles from the pa, in the past, and basically everybody's in the same boat.
So the, the extra $2,700, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but could you just share it for me? Where would that $2,700?
It'll come out of the Equipment Replacement Reserve, yep.
Just so it's on there for the record. Okay, other questions or discussion?
Yeah, it's just unfortunate with the crazy times right now with inflation going so high and parts and so on and so on. And everyone's, everyone's taking the brunt one way or another. But we need the vehicles.
Yep, I would agree. All right, if there's no other discussion, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to increase the allowed budget for the tandem truck, haul truck to 198,000 over the original 195,000 using funds from the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
All right, and you don't need a motion on the other vehicle, correct?
No, that one will be under.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to increase the allowed budget for the tandem haul truck to 198,000 over the original 195,000, using funds from the Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. And we will return back on item C, MSC Municipal Services Center Backup Generator Repair. Who else?
I feel like all I bring is bad news, so I apologize.
No, you give expensive news.
Yeah, somebody's got to do it. So this last week, our municipal service building here has a backup power generator that sits out in the back middle of the parking lot. And we had, we've, it's been some ongoing issues and we didn't think it was going to be to this extent, but it ran through its normal weekly run cycle this last week. And it started discharging anti-freeze out the exhaust and it blew out the head gasket and started running all over the ground. So we had a company come out that does most of our generator work and tested the engine, did a compression test, did a pressure test on it, and it's not looking good. So basically, the engine is junk on that backup generator here, and we're needing to repair it as quickly as possible. It does supply power to, to the building and other important items, you know, when the power does go out. So we reached out to a Generac supplier and a Kohler supplier on the option to fix or replace either the generator, the engine, the whole thing. The cost to replace the engine with a refurbished engine, we can get in about three weeks. I gave you that price. We did get some pricing today from a Generac supplier. And a cost of a new engine through them is going to be $12,180. So we would definitely recommend that's the option that we choose. It's the most, it's the quickest, and we're getting a new engine in there. It does come with a, it currently comes with a 90-day warranty, and we're going to ask to have that extended to at least three years, knowing the issues that we've had with this thing since it's been put in. And the, we kind of waited out, you know, 12 to 15,000 for the new engine and what would that cost to just replace the whole unit? I don't think it would cost, it'd cost a little more to replace the whole unit, I'd think between 35 and 40,000. But the issue with generators, just like everything else, they're like a year out. To buy a new generator right now, you're out about 48 to 52 weeks.
And you can, they have one to replace it right away?
No. So we wouldn't.
How long the lead is that?
For the engine?
Yeah.
The engine we can get in 10 days. So a brand-new engine through Walter is 10 days. They, they are a Generac, they carry Generac.
And the fastest.
Yep, yep. So that would be the option that we would, we would like to go is, is get the engine on order and have it here, ship in about 10 days, and then they'd come up and put it in.
How old is that generator?
Was put in here with this facility in 2012.
How long are they supposed to last?
We have other units in the village that are probably 30 to 35 years old. So all of our sanitary ma, our lift station generators, what you see throughout the village, those are all, you know, from whenever the sewer went in, in the 80s, a lot of those were put in.
And they used to make stuff last.
Are they the same make as this generator?
No.
They're not. So the ones that we have in the sanitary sewer?
Most of those are Kohlers. And we have, we had one Cummins at the fire station that we sold, the rest are Kohlers. This one here, the one at lift station 18, and the one at the new fire station are all Generacs.
So, and did you, when you looked at the cost of a new generator, did you look at Kohler, or did you just look at?
So we, I didn't get a formal price yet through, for a Kohler generator yet. We were just told offhand, it'd probably be in that 35 to 40 range for an 80 KW. You know, I wouldn't be against replacing this one with a Kohler. But again, it's a timing issue, is, you know, we're going to be out of a backup generator for up to a year, potentially up to a year.
I just, so sometimes, you know, when you're looking at, when you're looking at your capital equipment, right? You, you try to get, and you, you guys know this, but you try to get equipment that's all the same, it's similar, right? You know, in case you need to purchase additional equipment. So to me, if we have, you know, a Cummins generator here and a couple of Generac, but we have mostly Kohler, and our Kohler we've been successful with, you know, it would make sense to me to, to get the Kohler. Plus, the Kohler seems to hold up a lot better. That being said, I know that we can't wait a year where we have this. So, you know, one suggestion I would offer to the board on this is, I, I think maybe we move ahead with the short-term solution, which is $12,000, $12,180 to get a new engine. But I think at the same time, we look at a quote for a potential Kohler.
A quote, but we are getting a new engine, so we don't, but shouldn't it be on some sort of rotation too, for replacement?
I mean, these generators, eventually, yes, but these, these should be 30, 40-year items.
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't something that should, shouldn't be replaced right now. And even, you know, the guy from the company that came up and looked at it, he said he's never seen anything like it, and he puts in Generacs all the time. So I, maybe it's a fluke, maybe it's, I don't know. You know, we've had them, we have them professionally maintained and inspected, you know, annually, so. And it, it did have a heater on it, so it's not that the engine froze and, and couldn't start and had, you know, that, the block froze. They're all have engine heaters, so I don't know.
You know what it was? Kept on hanging up, and when they talked about your engine warranty.
Probably.
Phone call.
I know.
So how, how often do you test them and run them?
They run weekly. So every, all of our generators here in the village run weekly.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I put a new, I have a new furnace that went in my house in 2017. It had a 20-year warranty on it, on the, on the inductor, induction motor on it. And the induction motor went out on the coldest night of the year, on a Sunday, which had a 20-year warranty. And when I called up because of the 20-year warranty, the guy said the same thing, I've never heard of such a thing. Well, I guess I must just be the luck, we must be the luckiest people in the entire world.
Yeah, right.
Anyway.
Looks like that.
I, I don't know. I, I threw that out there as an idea, maybe that's something that we want to put on an agenda for future discussion, if that's something we want to entertain. Otherwise, I mean, there's an immediate problem here that we have to resolve, so I, I would look for a motion.
I'm all for the new engine, but I mean, we don't need to replace it too soon, it is a new engine. But we do need to look at that for down the road, I guess.
Should we just put it on the agenda for further future discussion?
Why don't we get some proposals on a couple of new brands? We'll maybe get a estimate for a proposal for Cummins and for a Kohler, both are local brands that we've used. And then I will fix this one now, and then we'll, we'll, let's see how this one responds. And if this one can start functioning properly and not have as many issues as we've seen in the past, we'll let it ride. But if it's continually having issues. Yeah.
What would be the warranty on this new, new engine?
He mentioned possibly a three-year warranty.
Possibly?
Yeah, I have to finalize that with him.
Did, you said that there was problems with it in the past?
We've had other issues with this generator, yeah.
With this particular one?
With this one here, yes.
Yeah, we have to go with a new engine, that's the best solution right now.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to take the most effective option on replacing, which would be the cost of a new engine at $12,180, with a new generator funded by Municipal Service Center Building Contract Services.
All right, motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to approve the purchase of a new engine at a cost of 12,000, not to exceed $12,180, as funded by Municipal Service Center Building Contract Services. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second by trustee Ward. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. All right. Item number 10, Fire Department Items, Ordinance 22002, An Ordinance Creating 4.6 of the Swamaco Village Code Related to Emergency Management, First Reading, Chief Bertler.
All righty. So last year, the village board updated and adopted a new emergency operation plan. However, looking into position further, kind of realized that there is no duties and roles specified in the village code, unlike the fire chief position and police department. There is code referencing the organizational structure and duties of those departments. So this isn't something that just kind of created, it's something we're probably actually missing, looking at like Alloays and Bellevues and Howard's codes, they have specific duties and, like I said, organizational structure of that position itself. So this newly created ordinance, or code, I should say, would adopt the emergency management services organization and duties for that position, like I said, just like similar communities around us. So something that we're probably missing, something that we need to have under state law. So this would just define that position.
But it's not technically something we have to have under state law, it's something we need to get grants with.
No, we actually need to have it under state law. We have to have, so we have to have an emergency services organization, which defines who's the emergency manager, manager for the village and that, how that organizational structure is laid out. That's, if you kind of look under the, that kind of reference sheet, the little article, it'd be the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, says under state law, if you would read that one, the governing body of each municipality must adopt emergency management plan, which we did last year, compatible with the state plan, and then appoint a head of emergency management services. So you did do that as well, but there's no code in the village, there's no code in the village ordinance at this time defining that structure and the duties of that position.
So last year, the village board updated and adopted a new emergency operation plan?
Correct.
And we did that because it was required by state law?
Correct.
But we, we didn't have that previously?
I don't know if ever, there was ever one adopted, there was one kind of floating out there, I'm not sure if it was ever adopted in the past. So we, like I said, last year, I've updated and adopted the emergency operations plan. However, we also need a reference section, kind of the organizational structure and the duties of that, with that plan is kind of details, I guess, so.
I mean, that would make sense.
Yeah. Basically, it's like, compared to the fire department, you have the duties and roles of the, what the fire department does, what the fire chief does. You also have in your village code, the duties and roles, organizational structure of the police department. This just defines what that, the duties and roles of the emergency management position or services would be. It's like I said, something we're probably actually missing, comparing to other municipalities.
You mentioned that here, you mentioned Howard, Bellevue.
Correct. And Green Bay, I mean, so we're probably actually missing it compared to, just, probably just forgotten about.
Just, the emergency plan of Brown County shall be utilized as needed where no specific local planning element is in place.
Correct. So if we don't have something that's adopted in our emergency operations plan, we would refer to what Brown County has.
But we have to have one?
We have to have a plan, correct, but it's.
But it says we don't here?
We do. If there was something that was missing out of that plan, say we don't have something defining how civil unrest were to lay out, we would refer to the Brown County plan. Or the state plan. It's a catch-all, correct.
How, how is an emergency determined? Or don't we have time for that?
There's a lot of factors that, so we would, we would, like I said, declare an emergency that would have, need to be signed off by the president at the time of, of the village board. And then in this section, this code, the village board would need to have a quorum within 72 hours to ratify that resolution as well. And that kind of, that states it in this code as well.
That's stated in the code that we currently have.
Correct.
That, that it's the requirement that a village, a quorum of the village board is required to ratify an actual emergency.
Correct, yep.
That's good.
So you guys would get together and say, okay, but then we got to get four of us together?
Correct, yep.
We'd have to have an emergency meeting.
Just like we did with the COVID, you guys did it a few times where you approved that resolution, it would kind of follow that similar aspect. So before you were president, Laura, President Nelson signed that.
All right.
Any questions off the, like I said, these were kind of, working with Minister Kaker, we kind of took a little bit from, if it are needs from the surrounding municipalities and.
So could you just provide, just as a, just as a, because I'm interested in it, maybe, Howard, Bellevue, and Alloay, could you just ask them, you know, how long they've had their plan in place?
Yep, I can definitely.
And then just as a piece of information?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how delinquent, you know, how delinquent we are in this. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So no, no motion at this time, it's only the first reading, but I'll get you that info.
Other things you'd like to see from Chief Bertler on this, in the second reading, anyone?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right. Fire Department Items 10B, Resolution 22002. Should that be the same resolution number? Or, well, sorry, the first was an ordinance number.
Correct, yep.
My apologies.
Yep.
My apologies. Resolution 22002, resolution formally in support of the Swamaco Fire Department applying for the 2022 FEMA Safer Grant. Chief Burtler?
Okay. So one objective in the strategic plan from, I guess it was kind of adopted last year, two years ago, for 21 to 23, does call for one position, one additional full-time firefighter position in 2023. Public Works was added this year and next year would be potentially a full-time firefighter as well. Working with the new grant writer, Ben Rogers, I think he started last week, met with him a few, about three times already, numerous emails, he would like support from the village board. Also working with Minister Kaker, this is an opportunity to fund that position in 2023. He would fund the position for three years. Obviously, there's no guarantee, this is just applying for the grant. With this grant, there is no cost share or match required from the village. It's a 100%, it's a grant donation, I won't say donation, but award, so there would be no cost to the village if this was received for three years. Like I said, speaking with Ben Rogers, he would like support from the village board on any grant that he would write and just kind of show a support from the village's aspect that they are in favor of this. Kind of gives the, the grant more merit in his, in his eyes. They said he's the new grant writer, very impressed with him so far. He will come to a future board meeting to introduce himself. But for the, for being new to grant writing, he's done a ton of research already, has visited multiple grant writers across the state, worked with multiple municipalities as well, so.
So after this grant is over in three years, are we required to keep him on or is that our discretion?
That, that would be the, the goal of it. I mean, you're not-
That's the goal, but is it a requirement?
You're not, you are not required.
Well, that's the problem. We're never going to take that position away and it kind of forces us. You know I'm against this.
I mean, it, it, honestly, it forces your hand.
No, I don't think it forces-
I mean, you're not required to. The plan, the hope would be that you would keep these positions.
At that point?
If you put it out there as a grant-funded position through X number of years, education does it all the time and they know that after that time, there could be-
There could be layoffs, yeah.
Yeah, it could be laid off indefinitely.
But you've already put it in your strategic plan to hire this individual, you're just finding a way to-
Pay for it, yeah.
Not pay for it for three years.
I'm just one, I'm just concerned that if the plan doesn't go to plan, if we don't have the funds for-
Correct.
Or it doesn't experience the growth or there's no need for it, are we locked in? And Chief Burtler says no, so.
Well, we're not making a commitment to the person, right?
Correct.
It's a grant position.
It's like any other, it, it falls under the same category as any other employee in the state of Wisconsin. When you hire somebody, they're, they're hired at will.
Well, it's also forcing us quicker into 24-hour service and even states that there. And I, I don't know, is, is the grant, if we were to get the grant, is that just for the salary and we still have to cover benefits?
Nope, so it would color, it would cover the salary and benefits for three years. It does not cover any, say if there was overtime, that training, that type of stuff, but it covers the salary and benefits for three years.
And now the federal government gets to tell us what to do even more yet?
Nope. The only thing that would, you would show statistics, how it improved your response times, call, you know, training, that type of stuff. Those are the-
Follow-up.
But like I said, after three years, you could not choose to fund this position and they would be, you know, laid off at that time. Like I said, the strategic plan, like Mr. Dunk said, does call for additional firefighter. This is just an opportunity to pay for that.
So Michelle, I hear what you're saying, but I, I'm looking for that with all these grants too, is what's the string attached?
Yeah.
And are we going to be forced to put out money that we otherwise would not be putting out? In this case, it's part of our plan, it's something we're going to do anyway and it's just offering us an opportunity. It's not a guarantee by any-
Correct. And the, the chances are, you know, speaking with Ben, I mean, they're slim. I think only 13, 13 or 15 municipalities in Wisconsin have received this since 2015. So, I mean, it's not like, it's given out like candy by any means. It's-
See how good of a grant writer Ben is?
Exactly.
It's a slim chance, but it would be an opportunity-
It's, it's an opportunity.
Cover some salary and benefits that we otherwise would have taken out of our coffers to pay for.
I'm, I'm always told there's no strings, but I, I just, I have a hard time getting close.
That's why I was asking about the back end of it and if there's nothing, then I'm open with it.
And I have one question. Trustee Eckert pointed it out. So it does mention in here, industry minimum standards and attain 24-hour staffing to provide adequate fire protection. So is there, is there a requirement within this grant that we are somehow advancing towards 24-hour fire? I mean, technically, we have 24-hour fire protection.
Correct.
It's just on a volunteer basis, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's just kind of one of those, so he wrote the resolution, we would probably staff this person, you know, different hours, so it would, we would work towards that 20, say 24 hours, but it would provide 24-hour coverage. They wouldn't, we wouldn't be a 24-hour department by any means. We're not, we're not there by call volume, population, we're just not, we would be-
Be someone at the station.
Correct.
So when this grant, so let's just say hypothetically, we, he's successful in writing for this grant and we're awarded this grant. Once we're awarded this grant, you would bring that to the board and say, hey, we're awarded this grant. And then would we have a chance, I mean, we could still refuse it, correct?
You could still refuse it at the time, yes.
So I guess from my perspective, I think we, we go ahead and we, we write for it. I'm fine writing for it, but I would just like to make sure that it comes to the board then and we, we know all of the details before we would approve acceptance. And that, maybe that helps with the string.
That's slight consolation, but no. Not really.
Don't, I expressed your concerns about, no, I, trust me, we made it very clear in our expectations. So yeah, he's, he's well aware. What, what we don't, what we do and we don't want.
I mean, I like the idea of writing, I, I mean, writing for a grant, we're, we're already funding a grant writer, so having him write for grants is a good thing.
It's what he's supposed to be doing.
But it doesn't necessarily mean we need to accept all of the grants.
Correct. It, it's, it's applying. The more you apply for, the more, the better chance you have of receiving. I mean, that's-
More, more lines in the water.
Well, you're our emergency guy now, don't you want local control? Because we give it away every time we have our mon, our hands out for money. Giving a little bigger piece away.
But he's, just like I said, Ben will be here, probably the next village board meeting to introduce himself, but he said, I made the comment, I, we should have hired him for, just for me, because I've been keeping him busy, so, which is a good thing, though. But he's just looking for support. It, it shows a little merit that the village is behind the position. I mean, you, you can choose not to accept it, but it does help with the committee that overlooks some of that, the village is in support of it.
There's no other discussion. I'll make a, approve of Resolution 22-002 in support of the Safer Grant.
Right, motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to approve Resolution 22-002 in support of the Safer Grant. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you. All right. Item 11, Recreation Department Items, 11A, allocation of fundraising donation dollars to Calavera Springs Park Master Plan. Who gets this one? Okay, so, over 2021, staff has been getting creative, trying to raise money and awareness for Swamaco Parks and Recreation. Between partnering with local businesses such as Townline and North Shore Bank, selling T-shirts, the Recreation Department has raised $1,775. The breakdown of that can be found in item 11A. It breakdown is as follows. Donation from Martenson and Izelle, $750. That was the Calavera Springs Park Master Plan specifically. Earmark for that. Item two, fundraising event, parks, T-shirts, $690. I got one for Christmas. Fundraising event, coins for the community with North Shore Bank, $150. And a fundraising event, silent quilt auction with primitive gatherings, $185. The committee supports allocating these dollars to the Calavera Springs Park Master Plan. So if there are questions, we can ask those questions.
I, I mean, you know, like, as I've stated before, I, I think Calavera is awesome just the way it is. I think some of the master plans are unfortunate, but there's a lot of people here that want to see some other things there and I guess for that reason, I'll be for this.
Trustee Andrews, you, you sit on Park and Rec. Did you have any comments you'd like to add?
Just that, what it states here is, you know, the committee did support, because we, we talked about all these monies in our meetings and wanted to know what to do with them and where to put them, so we said we needed to create a fund for it to make sure it all goes to, towards the Calavera Park Master Plan. So I'm all in favor for this and if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to approve the $1,775 from donations and fundraising efforts and put it into the Calavera Park Fund for Calavera Springs Park Master Plan.
Very good. Trustee Andrews has made a motion to approve $1,775 from donations and fundraising efforts to be put into the Calavera Park Fund for Calavera Springs Park Master Plan. Is there a second? I have a second from trustee Schneider. Any other further discussion or questions from the board?
Just want to make a comment that I'm appreciative of any time we find alternative methods to raise funds other than property tax payers.
Good point.
I think, that, that is a good point.
Good point.
You know, I, I feel, I'm sorry to overlook that because, you know, you had a wonderful donation from Martenson and Izelle for $750. You know, the creative T-shirts, which if you don't have one, get one, they, they're great. And a couple of the other novel ideas, I can only hope that we continue to have, you know, these kind of ideas generate when we get a new Park and Rec director, so. Anyway, motion on the floor by trustee Andrews and seconded by trustee Schneider. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I tried to get some extra money by buying a lottery ticket, but it just didn't go to Schwab and On.
Thank you. All right, discussion on future agenda items. Anyone with future agenda items that they'd like to discuss?
I do.
Excellent.
So speaking of grant writers, I think now, because it's early in the year, right away, and we know, we do know, we have some park projects that we're looking to take care of. The tennis court, pickleball, anything, anything park-related, some of this stuff is some big dollars and I would really like that grant writer to start to focus on some of that stuff with whatever direction we want to really, really give him on it, but.
If Chief Burtler leaves him alone.
Alex will, will hear about this too and I think we need to move forward with that grant writers looking for helping us out with this stuff.
So a, as far as the future agenda item, would you be looking for an update, now that we have a grant writer, would you be looking for an update to the board in terms of what that grant writer is going to be looking at or are there, can the grant writer provide us a general idea or can our administration provide us a general idea of where that grant writer is going to be fishing?
Well, yes, but right now specifically is that tennis court, pickleball thing that we have going out for bid. So if we can kind of tie in with that, especially because that's, as we all know, that was some big dollars. And then we can relook at the, the master plan and see what, what the next steps were and see if that can be something incorporated into a grant too.
So it sounds like for the next agenda, what, and I, I think we could all agree to that, trustee Andrews would like to see, the board would like to see an update in terms of, you know, are there any plans to be looking for pickleball, tennis court, uh, grant monies?
I think too, just including there, you know, for us, for our knowledge, what's a reasonable expectation of what we can expect? We're not really paying his full salary, we're getting a sliver of that. So I, I kind of want to know, you know, if we're using him for this grant and you're saying you're occupying his time, how much of his time are we going to be able to get for what we're paying for? I would want, you know, early on, as, as we start to understand his role and how much